Please join us. This is the start of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Draka.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence as we reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the agenda as received, proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 The agenda is adopted. Next, we will move to public comments. First, we'll start. Is there anybody in the room that wish to make a public comment on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anybody online. All right. Moving forward, this is the Years of Service Awards to employees with 20 or more years of service. Mr. Veder.
Yes, good morning. We have one award to give. It's to Angela DeCosta of Consolidated Communications Center for 20 years of service.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Angela. I don't believe you're here today, but on behalf of the Board, thank you for your service of the county. All right, next, we'll move on to claims and payments. Michelle.
Good morning, Board. Today's total bill payment is $223,873.18, and out of that, there is one payment from the E-911 Service Board, $40,440 to Raycom for Swiss Phone Upgrade. I think that was the only large, significant item I saw this time. And we are also making payments out of the $6040 fund of $2,035.18. I believe everything is in order.
All right. This will be a resolution that the Board of Supervisors authorized expenditures and that the county order to be authorized to direct and issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Draka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes. Next, we will move on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas. Today, our secondary roads crews are out hauling, placing rock, spot rock, on the gravel road system. Of course, due to the recent rain, a lot of the roads are saturated, and again, there are a lot of potholes on the gravel road system. Please bear with us. We are placing spot rock in most districts today. Tomorrow, it sounds like we are going to be plumbing snow, possibly tomorrow through Thursday, maybe even Friday. We'll just see what the weather brings us. And I also wanted to mention that last week, I attended the Asphalt Paving Association, the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa, the annual meeting, and we were presented with this William Natty Award of Excellence for the Grundy Road Project. So on behalf of Black Hawk County and Grundy County, we accepted this award. It's given to the project, the best asphalt paving project in the state of Iowa for each year. So we received it in 2023. And I know I've said this in the past, but I do want to express appreciation to both Boards of Supervisors for allowing us to construct this project and to staff. Just expressing our gratitude. And of course, it was Brett Klemm, who passed away in December. He was our chief inspector on this project. So thanks to him and all the staff and to you. We have a great project out there. So it's nice to be recognized for that project.
Thank you. Congratulations to you and all of your staff. It's a nice-looking trophy, too. They're a nice-looking award.
Good morning. I'm the President and HR Director. So just a quick update on the process of PDQs for the classification and compensation study. So we have reviewed about 162 PDQs that were submitted across our roughly 380 staff. And we've got about 83 job classifications represented, which is about 70% of all of our job classifications, which is fabulous. So this is our first deadline. And I just want to say thank you to the staff and to the supervisory staff and department heads for getting that process moving along and for everybody participating. We still have some follow-up to do, but we're in a really good position to move on to the next phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board. Brad Metcalf, County Safety Coordinator. Just wanted to get back to you in regards to a question that was brought up last week about the AEDs and the service life for those. All of ours were manufactured in 2016. And I spoke with the manufacturer, and they said the service life is right at seven years. But they said they're still making that model, parts and service are still available. So at this point, they don't really recommend any replacement. Once they stop making parts for that, they will issue an end-of-life letter, and then they'll let us know so we may have to plan more at that point.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads or elected officials? Yes, Mr. Veder.
Yes, thanks. I wanted to give an update about the election office removal or relocation project. It's one of the ARPA projects. This has been going through the process with Baker-Tilly, and there were some delays on it. But we finally got information back from Baker-Tilly. But we're at a kind of an inflection point here. One thing, when they asked for further information, and we supplied it from the study done by InVision, we had a dollar figure on that project of $880,200. And InVision informed us that that was the space for elections alone. There was some training space there that was planned to be used for voting during large elections, absentee voting. And that had a separate figure on it of $543,750. There was another amount for doing restrooms and exterior work and so forth that made the total project of doing that in the JCS building around a little over $2 million. So I thought it was important for the Board to realize that. And there are a couple of consequences of that. I think it's important to note that this is still a viable and important project, and the change in cost doesn't change its eligibility at all. But it does mean that a written justification would be required for the project as for all projects, all ARPA projects over $1 million. But I also wanted to report that I have been discussing this with Rory Gaving, who has some big concerns about going forward with this project at that location because of the consequence that would ensue for juvenile court services, which it would be hard to place at Pinecrest, which is, I think, either Pinecrest or the courthouse basement were looked at as possible places for them to land. Neither one of them is ideal. And in discussing this further with Rory, we started talking about another alternative, possibly putting up a building on the Pinecrest campus where there's space for it, and it would alleviate a number of things and would address one of my biggest concerns about the JCS spot, which was really inadequate parking. At Pinecrest, there's a large amount of currently underutilized parking. So this is, you know, just kind of a first-blush reexamination of this. And so I don't want to give you the idea that we've taken this very far. There's supposed to be a Space Committee meeting in a couple of weeks where I think would be the best place to initiate any serious discussions on this. But I just wanted the Board to be up to date on this and see if you had any questions.
As a member of the Space Committee, I request we have that meeting within two weeks to keep this moving.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads or elected officials? Any online? All right. We will move on to the minutes approved from the February 28th regular meeting and the March 2 budget work session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All the minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved by a single resolution unless there's something anybody wishes to pull out or discuss.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Draka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes. Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Peters Construction Waterloo, Iowa, for the Sheriff's Office Lobby Renovation Project with a bid of $512,858 using American Rescue Plan funds be approved as recommended by Tony Thompson, Sheriff.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a move and second. Yes, go ahead.
Just here to answer any questions, if you had any. Or curbs with Sheriff.
I do have a question, Mark.
Yes.
At the time that Rory sent the information, she mentioned that the SAM.gov had not been received yet, and that was needed. Any update on that? I'm assuming we don't move forward on the project until that has been received.
Linda, this is Angie Nace with InVision Architecture. I did follow up with Peters this morning. They have a SAM.gov number, but it's expired, so they're in the process of getting that renewed. And we have our recommendation letter in place pending that being given to us.
Any idea on timeline? Did they think close, I mean, quick, because you'd already received it?
When they were going to have to get a new number, they thought it was going to be a month, so I expect it to be less than that. That's about all I can tell you. And I can give you an update once I have it.
That'd be great. Because everybody's, I'm sure, eager to get going on it. And that's the only thing that we know of at this point that we're waiting on, then?
Yep. The discussions with Tony have been that we, once we start construction, they want to keep it moving. So what will be happening right now will be behind the scenes anyhow, paperwork, the middles, all the things, so they can get materials on order. And then construction won't start for probably two to three months yet. But I will give you an update on the SAM.gov number as soon as I have it.
All right. Any other further questions from the Board?
Are we waiting, then, to get that number? Are we going to prove it today?
Well, we do have a resolution or a motion on the floor. But is there a request to table?
I guess I'd at least make the amendment that that's contingent on receiving that SAM.gov and hearing from Angie, and written email.
So that means nothing could start, Linda, until we do get that number?
Correct.
We won't issue the contract or the notice to proceed until we have that.
And until it's been checked as well.
We will send that off to Mike, the contract off to Mike, once we have it.
And that's agreeable to the motion?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions?
I'm sorry. I'm not sure what this number is. Could you slow down when you say what that is?
SAM.gov.
Just SAM.gov. It's required for the federal funding.
They use.
SAM.gov.
SAM.gov number from the feds.
Yeah, they use that to check suspension and debarment.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions? All right. This is a resolution. Please answer your, your name is called. Roll call.
Little.
Yes.
Draka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes. Moving on to other businesses, discussion, possible action, consideration for the purchase and installment of a digital sign at the Pinecrest Building not to exceed $50,000 as recommended by Caitlin Emrick, interim Public Health Director.
Where's this funding coming from?
I believe that approximately $40,000 of this was a grant.
Good morning, Board. Rory Gaving, Maintenance Superintendent. I believe.
So are you presenting today, I'm sorry, Rory, are you presenting then in Caitlin's absence?
Actually, Lisa's here as well. She can talk to the grant. I was going to speak to the other services that were necessary.
Good morning, Board. Lisa Sesterhan, Public Health Planner. Yes, the actual purchase of the sign is funded through an emergency response multi-year program. So there's two sources of funds in that, vaccine equity, as well as a different vaccine money that covers all vaccines for ACIP-approved immunizations. And Rory can speak to the installation of the sign and maintenance of the sign and the variance. And the electrical is not covered under the grant. It's federal funds. So just the purchase of the sign is covered.
And how much was the total for the grant?
We have remaining grant funds for two projects. There's $103,000 between the two pots of money. So it covers the purchase of the sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Lisa indicated, there are three portions within this project that are not covered through grant money. That would be the sign installation, variance fee, and then also the electrical service. And so what is being presented is a request from the Board of Supervisors to approve this in an amount not to exceed $20,000. I have received.
Is that your budget, Rory?
I have, in talking to Michelle, I actually have two projects that were budgeted for this year that are not going to go through, one of them being the fire alarm panel. As you remember, I did put that on for this future budget year. For this particular project, that's not going to happen this year. I had budgeted for $10,000 for an upgrade to the existing fire alarm panel. After I did that, we found out that that is not going to be in our best interest to upgrade this. It would be in our better interest to just replace the unit, and that's what I budgeted for, for moving forward. So that's $10,000 that I had in my budget that I thought that we could pull that, utilize that for part of it. The other one would be the pickup. And as you know, we ran into a problem just with lead times and costs. So we decided to postpone that project as well. And we did ask for that moving forward in the budget. So that was $43,000. So between those two items, if it's okay with the Board, I thought that that would be a pool of money that we could pull from in order to get this project moving forward.
Rory, you said that installation, variance fees, and electrical service would be less than $20,000?
Not to exceed $20,000.
Okay.
I had two questions, I guess, Rory. One was about structurally, nothing's being changed or reconfigured that would harm, I guess, the signage there currently or not?
The existing sign would be removed. The new sign would go in its place. Would it have a new concrete pad that this sign would be sitting on? And it would be approximately a five-by-seven digital sign. Three-by-seven, sorry. Three-by-seven.
And the life of the sign would be approximately? I'm just thinking maintenance and some of the things that we need to look out, just having an idea of those things.
The sign would be three and a half feet, excuse me, three feet, five inches tall by seven feet, three inches wide.
I think Supervisor Leyland was asking about the expected life, or how long the sign would.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
I don't have a specific answer for the life of the sign. I know that I see a lot of the LED message centers around town. But I don't have a specific in terms of the life of the sign.
Any type of maintenance required either? That was just something from a person that doesn't know much about the digital sign, except for seeing them.
There is, Linda, I'd like to mention, there is a five-year parts and a one-year labor warranty on the sign.
Okay.
Rory, who's in charge of putting the information, then, if it's digital, on the board itself?
That would be through the Health Department. And one of the things that is very nice about this sign is it would act as a directory as to the tenants that are in the facility. But then you can also incorporate messages on the sign. So like, for an example, if the VA Department is having an activity in their center, they could reach out to the Health Department and have that message flashed up on the sign, which I do think that that part of it would be very beneficial. And so I guess to answer your question in short, the Health Department would be overseeing the sign, but it would just take a matter of the entity to reach out to the Health Department and put that request in.
Are they receptive of that, the Health Department?
Yes, we are. We have a communications team, so we would develop procedures for that and inform the other tenants of the building. And the sign could also be used to flash emergency messages to the community, too.
Last question I have is, any study done to see, is far as visually seeing it driving down the street, because I'm assuming that's what it's for?
They have what they call millimeters when they're looking at digital signs. And so we were given three different specifications. And researching those specifications on millimeters, the smaller, obviously, the smaller the millimeter, the clearer and crisp the photo is. And that's really what the team is looking for, is something that is very clear and crisp. I did want to mention also, given the location that this sign is in, you know, we do have the historical neighborhood very close to it. One nice feature is the sign is equipped to dim down at night, which I believe is a very, very nice feature with this sign. It still would have to get the variance and go through that process to receive approval to install this sign.
I guess, just because of the, some issues we've had just recently, talking about regarding signage in the courthouse and properties that we have, I guess that's something I just want to make sure that the Board's made aware, I guess, of some of those messages or whatever. And not that, you know, that they're not certainly responsible enough to get those out. I'm appreciating that. But is there something we should do, I guess, just to make certain that the Board has approved or be aware of those messages? Just a question to either one, I guess, of you.
As part of our procedures, I would possibly recommend that we outline the messages that could be displayed without permission. And then if there was something different, you know, we could certainly take that, whether it be the Board of Health or the Board of Supervisors. But I think that we could outline what could be displayed from all the departments in generalities to give you a better sense as to what would be included. And that could be part of our procedures.
Sure. Was anything sent to the Board, I guess, showing a display of similar, what it would look like? I can't remember.
I don't believe it was sent to this Board. We do have pictures, and Rory and I have both, we have references. And so we have driven around and looked at the signs. So we have a good sense as to how that would look.
Do you know some of the ones in the community off the top of your head?
Yes. There's the Signs of Tomorrow building in Cedar Falls that has one. The Waterloo Library has a sign. And it's Grace Baptist Church, I think, over on Hammond Road. And then Farmer State Bank on Towers, so right on the other side, right over by, kind of across from Sam's Club, that area there.
Rory, before we actually buy it, are we going to make sure we procure the variance first?
Yes, that's actually was in the RFP as a requirement from the vendor that we choose that they go through that permitting variance process.
Before we actually purchase?
What we need.
Yeah, we would want to make our recommendation for the vendor. They would go through that variance project before we would pay for the services.
Okay. And then obviously, this was bid out?
Yeah, we did receive a total of four bids from two vendors. One vendor here locally, we received three different options. And then another vendor, I believe they're out of Des Moines. And we are actually in the process of scoring those bids.
All right.
Rory, I just wanted to clarify.
You have, y'all, go ahead, Grant.
The action on the agenda says not to exceed $50,000, and you were talking about $20,000. So is the $50,000 for the full project and then $20,000 just for the variance and the electrical, or?
The $50,000 is actually the grant amount. The $20,000 is the not-to-exceed for the installation, the variance fee, and the electrical service installation.
Okay. So the $50,000 is on top of $20,000?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Grant poses a good question. I thought, I know we're having discussion on what's possible board action, but I think there's probably some things that need to be cleared up before we do a resolution or motion. And I was going to recommend that we do that for next week when it is everything clear in the resolution. But I did have a question before we moved on, was for Michelle, as far as typically, the overages would be coming from the department. You know, in this case, if there's overages, they'd find it in their budgets to fund the additional costs. So I was wondering if it would be your recommendation to do it the way it's being suggested, or if you had other thoughts or ideas on funding?
I have talked to both Rory and briefly to Caitlin about that. Caitlin was not sure she had enough funding in her budget. We believe that other departments will be able to put messages on the sign, which is why we thought it might be appropriate to go ahead and use other funding for the rest of the sign, because we felt like the whole county and particularly everybody located in the Pinecrest facility would benefit from the sign. But that's up to the Board.
Yeah, I would second that sentiment. I see a lot of departments are going to benefit from this. And this is, I think this would fall under a maintenance need for the building.
So Rory, this can be total of $70,000 or a total of $50,000?
Total of $70, Tom. So the digital sign itself, sorry, the emergency response multi-year grant is $50,000. The sign installation is $4,000. Variance fee is roughly $550. The electrical service is, I have a outstanding quote in the amount of roughly $15,000. So we're looking at the total cost for the project installed at anywhere between $69 and $70,000.
But, yeah, okay. But the diet of only $50,000 is all we're approving. We're not approving 70.
That's why I was suggesting we had that cleared up for the next week, possibly for a resolution or a motion, because it's not clear today.
I think this is pretty easy to clear up, like, right now. But I believe that there is a time. I think this is pretty easy to clear up, like, right now, but I believe that the, that there is a timeline that the Health Department is up against, so I wonder if they could speak to that, about the timeline needs for the grant?
Yes, thank you. The grant funds need to be spent by the end of June for both pots of money. We anticipate, we have a Board of Health meeting tomorrow morning, and both, this item is on the agenda for approval. Following that, that would be pending contract review, and then the variance that would take place. I, I see, I understand the agenda item, I, on the memo that was sent, that last line, that is probably more accurate in terms of what we'd be asking from the Board today to approve the purchase of sign installation, variance fee, and electrical service installation for an amount not to exceed 20,000.
Rory, is, you haven't gone through the bids yet, or you have?
We're in the process of going through them. We actually went through the bids last Friday. We had a couple of questions for, for both vendors. Those vendors have responded to those questions, and we are going back through the bids this afternoon.
Should they come back to the Board of Supervisors? The bids?
Yeah, I think, like Lisa had indicated, I believe the, the bids for the actual sign itself is going in front of the Board of Health for review. And then what we're asking for the supervisors today then are those fees outside of that grant money, which would be the not to exceed 20,000. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think the timeframe, there should be plenty of time. I kind of agree with Linda. There's a few things we got to clear up yet. I'd make a motion if we tabled this for a week.
All right. Do we already, I think, I believe we already have a motion on the floor.
No, no, there's no motion on the floor, so there's, there's no need to table it. Unless somebody else heard a motion, I don't write, I didn't write one down.
How would that affect your timeline at the Board of Health?
I, I know that they were hoping to go to the, I think it's the March meeting, city planning meeting to obtain the variance. So I, I can't speak exactly if the week is going to make a difference, but it would, I think the Board of Health could approve it pending Board of Supervisors approval next week. But I would need to talk with the contractor, because they aren't going to move forward on the variance unless they know that everything's approved and have that, have that completed.
Then I will second that motion, just because I'd like to have the additional time, if we could, just to make sure Caitlin's back, we're all okay with going forward and ready to proceed, if it's at all possible.
So we don't actually need the motion, but we've got a motion to second it? Is that, just making sure I'm?
To table it, yeah.
Yeah. There's, Linda, there's no motion on the floor to approve it, so there's no need to move to table.
So we'll be fine. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 9B. This is a resolution to approve the IT Department immutable backup servers project with an estimated cost of $25,000 to be paid for with American Rescue Plan funds.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Al?
Hello, Board. Al, you IT Director? This is the mutable server that would reside at our DR site. And what it does is it secures our backups from things like ransomware and accidental deletion. Any questions I can ask, answer for you?
Baker Tilly has issued this a burden of proof level two. That's the lowest expense category burden of proof you can get.
All right. All right. Do we have a motion? All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please answer as your name is called.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Makes as a resolution to approve the server upgrade project with estimated cost of $80,000 to be approved or to be paid for with American Rescue Plan funds.
And, Al, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I was going to move it. I will wait.
No, no, go ahead and move it. Go ahead and move it. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you.
And apologies for that. This one, Baker Tilly assigned a level four, but it also, that's fairly low on the burden of proof continuum. I'll let Al and/or Rory answer any other questions.
Sure. This would establish a dedicated HVAC system to our, our main infrastructure. Essentially, I believe, wouldn't know what the plans are, but it would, it would put an enclosure around the infrastructure, and it would have an HVAC system that would, in case of a fire or anything like that, it would take all the oxygen out of the room so that it would keep everything intact. So kind of, it's, it's a nice thing to have, and it is the most important infrastructure in the, in the whole county. So any questions I can answer about that?
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Item 9D, this is a motion to direct the County Auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 a.m. on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Swift Street, Waterloo, Iowa, and proposed ordinance number 77-277 from a request submitted by Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission to rezone three acres from A agriculture to C Commercial Manufacturing District in order to install a new gas collection and control system.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion, motion carries. Next, item E, this is a resolution with a minor plat survey submitted by Dorothy Hundley to plat 3.89 acres in order to split off two existing single-family homes from 38.68 acre parcel at 7880 West 27th Street and 7802 West 27th Street. And if approved, that the County Auditor be directed and certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Go ahead, Seth.
Okay, yeah, we have a request to plat 3.89 acres in order to split off an existing, two existing homes from the main parcel at 7880 West 27th Street and 7802 West 27th Street. It was moved by Brunette and seconded by Scherz to approve the request by Dorothy Hundley to plat 3.89 acres in order to split off two existing homes from the main parcel at 7877880 West 27th Street and 7802 West 27th Street. The request was unanimously approved. The one parcel containing the 1.5 acres to be platted at 7880 West 27th Street had 1.5 acres rezoned from A to AR Agricultural District. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at the regular meeting on September 20th, 2022, and was approved by the Board of Supervisors on October 25th, 2022. The second proposed lot at 7802 West 27th Street is a pre-1982 home, an agricultural district constructed in 1910, and it could be planted from the main parcel on the 1.5 acres at any time. Surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with some rural home in a zoned agricultural district to the north, south, east, and west. Plaid areas designated as agricultural on the future land use map, but component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Surrounding areas designated as agricultural to the north, south, east, and west. None of the areas located in a special flood hazard area. The applicant wishes to plat the 3.89 acres onto two lots so they could separate them from the main parcel. And the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the request at the regular meeting on February 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. I believe we already had a motion on the floor. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes. Resolution is adopted.
Item 9F, this is a resolution of the minor plat survey submitted by Curtis Dela Gardell to plat 1.5 acres in order to split off one existing single-family home from 16.92 acre parcel at 6616 Dubuque Road, Waterloo. And if approved, that the County Auditor be directed to certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead, Seth.
Okay, all right. West of 6607 Hammond Road, request to rezone through, let's see, oops, I have the wrong, have the wrong staff. Second. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, yeah, we have a request at 6616 Dubuque Road, Del Gardell Minor Plat, request to plat 1.5 acres in order to split off one existing home from the main parcel. It was moved by AG and seconded by Brunette to approve the request by Curtis Dela Gardell to plat 1.50 acres in order to split off one existing home from the main parcel. The request was unanimously approved. 1.5 acres in question is located at 6616 Dubuque Road, which is approximately 400 feet northeast of the Dubuque Road and Lafayette Road intersection. The one parcel containing the 1.5 acres to be platted at 6616 Dubuque Road had 1.5 acres that was rezoned from A, A to AR. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at the regular meeting on March 16th, 2010, and was approved by the Board of Supervisors on April 13th, 2010. Surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes in a zoned agricultural district to the south, the agricultural district, Nell Agricultural Limited District to the north and west. Land at East is a zoned agricultural district in the city of Raymond. Plaid area is designated as agricultural on the future land use map. The area to the north, south, and west is designated as agricultural, and to the east is agricultural in the city of Raymond. The existing home within the area to be platted is located in a special flood hazard area. However, the applicant did get a Loma on August 2010 to remove it from the 100-year flood plain. The FEMA preliminary map notes that the home is not located within the special flood hazard area or the 100-year flood plain. The proposed plat area is not located in Waterloo Airport, land use and height overlay review area, therefore all conditions are met. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the minor plat request at the regular meeting on February 21st, 2023.
All right. Thank you, Seth. Any questions from the Board? All right. Hearing none, there is a resolution on the floor. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes. Resolution is adopted. Next is any reports or information from the Board?
Thank you.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right. This meeting's adjourned.